Welcome everybody to the Eureka Springs City Council Meeting for Monday, April the 10th. If we have a roll call to establish form, please, ma'am.
Hey, Adamson.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Kristi Kendrick.
Here.
Ricky Schneider.
Here.
Karen McQuarney.
Yes, here.
You may stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Get a motion for approval of the agenda.
Salute.
Corrections?
No.
Additions?
Yes, I'd like to defer the discussion of the Sewer Committee until May, May 8.
Well, I'll second that.
Anybody in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Yeah. Any other additions? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I wanted to know if we could put the noise ordinance on here. I know you might be talking about something. My voice is almost gone.
You want to do that for next week? Next, what do you want to talk about on noise ordinance?
Pardon me?
What do you want to discuss on the noise ordinance?
I just, I just want to have a discussion with people at the table about the noise ordinance and whether it's strong enough.
Could we do that the next meeting?
We could do it at the next meeting. Yeah.
I mean, I think it'd be great if that's, because it's a new item.
Yeah.
Probably.
That'd be fine.
Why don't we do that?
Next week.
Under agenda. All right.
I'll do it down there. Yeah.
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Get approval of the minutes for March 27th.
Salute.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes for March 27th that submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for the minutes of March 30th, special meeting.
Salute.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? And all those in favor of approving the minutes for March 30th that submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We still have some vacancies. I think CFPC is going to be coming up with something shortly. I think they got a workshop. And same thing, we got vacancy on the hospital and HDC. So, if you're interested and got some qualifications on those two areas, please submit your application. Brings us down to public comments.
Can everybody hear me? Hello, City Council. Hello, Mr. Mayor. I am here about the water issue. I wanted to know if there's any possible way that people that live by themselves and only use a little amount of water, if people can be charged by just by the gallon that they use? Because I'm a very conservative person with my water. I mean, I live by myself, so it's not minimum. I never even use the water that I get charged every month on my bill. So, I wanted to urge City Council and to maybe consider it, to see if you can charge by the gallons that little bitty people like me, living alone, use. In the summer, I use a little bit more because of watering, but my gosh, it's a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's actually all I wanted to say.
Right.
Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, that concludes the public comments.
I bow out. I'm torn for skin.
Our next item is discussion of speed bumps.
Move to discuss speed bumps.
Ms. Kendrick, you want to lead off?
Uh, well, I was surprised to hear, I believe it was in the last meeting, that simply by a petition of five residents, a speed bump could be installed or removed. And then since that time, I looked all over the city code, looking for the source of this, and Kim Stryker found it apparently in the Public Works policy, which she tells me was approved by Acclamation, apparently in April of 2010. And I believe the, if you look at the policy, at the end of the second paragraph, it states that if a citizen disagrees with the Public Works Director's final decision, they may appeal that decision to the City Council. It seems to me that that appeal ought to be to the mayor, not to the City Council. Now, I don't know that it is our place, the City Council's place, to change, you know, policy of Public Works, which is a city department reporting to the mayor. And so, I would like people's thoughts on this matter.
I'm confused.
I am too. So, you're, you're saying that the decision, instead of coming to the City Council, which you did the last meeting, should actually be in, under the mayor's purview? The Public Works Director reports to the mayor, and it seems that that, and we all agreed, that the public, a speed bump was really an administrative decision for the mayor, obviously with the consultation, not just Public Works, but also the Police Department, and no doubt the Fire Department, too. And so, I was surprised to hear that it came to us. Mr. Mayor, do you have a thought on this?
Uh, David?
Is, this is, this is something you put together that I'm reading?
No.
This is there? Because I'm not finding that five people request to get a speed bump.
Uh, I believe it's in the mid, mid second paragraph. It says, "Applications for traffic control devices shall include five signatures, one per resident."
Aye.
Okay, it is there.
And it's not just for traffic bumps. It seems like all sorts of different traffic control devices.
I did, the reason I seconded you on that one, because I really had a problem with that, but then I also agree with you that I think that the mayor is the administrative person for the city and the department heads in consultation. So, I would be willing to support the changes of the issue of five residents getting a speed bump because they petitioned, and also changing it so that the mayor is the person. I support you in that.
Mitch McQuarney?
Yeah. I'm ready to go on to something else. I'm done.
Bob?
Well, I just, this was presented in the past as, if you came in with five signatures, you've got a speed bump. This just says an application. It doesn't say, this doesn't say that you get one if you have five signatures. This is just an application.
That makes it a legal application. That makes it a legal application.
Right. I would guess if you came in, to me, if one person came in and requested one, it would receive some consideration.
Well, the policy, then, I think in answer to David's question, is that in the past, if you had a petition with five or more people in there, we would look at it and go through the Public Works, the Police Department, Fire Department, see if they had any problems. If there wasn't a problem, then we'd go ahead and put them in. And then what, this one came up is because we had five people wanting it removed. And again, yeah, so this was more or less an appeal, I think, to the council, saying, what y'all want to do, and say, well, we think it's administrative, do what you think best of it. So, I mean, that's kind of basically what y'all said. And we're getting ready, you know, I haven't made a final decision because we're still consulting with the police and Public Works on that. But we have gone through and looked at the enforcement of that area, and ultimately, that's probably what we're going to do. I think we've found out that the speed bumps really aren't helping but creating more problems than they're solving. So, we'll probably go back. And this was, when it was first put up, we said, this is going to be a trial basis. We'll see what happens. If it works, it works. If it doesn't, we'll move it on. This was a low-cost item to try to solve the problem. So, it basically happened.
Well, and we can reuse them, too, can't we?
Absolutely, yeah.
So, the upshot of this is that you are considering whether to remove them?
Absolutely.
Just altogether?
Yep.
Not move them around or add a third one or anything like that?
No, there's no sense in a third one, I believe. I think what, the ultimate solution, I haven't made a final decision, is, you know, police enforcement of the speed limits.
I think what I'd like to do is ask the mayor to ask Public Works if the policy can be changed, and this is simply a request, so that it, the appeal is not to the City Council, it's to the mayor.
I think, and Mr. Weaver, correct me if I'm wrong, I think ultimately the City Council approves the policy. We've got a policy handbook for the, and we're going to be bringing that to the City Council for approval. So, ultimately, the City Council approves our handbook policy. And within that handbook policy will be sections for each department. And so, ultimately, the council will be approving. And what we can do is just make this note and put it in where we can approve the policy all at once. Yes, sir.
How many departments have policy manuals in their departments?
Every department has a, a, an item dedicated to that department. Each department changes a little bit. Fire and police have different policies than Public Works. Anybody here seeing those, anybody else's policies? Yes, we all have. I can give you a copy of the policy manual.
Well, I'm going on my fifth year, and I don't, I haven't.
You've never, obviously, never had a need for, to add a question about it.
It's called, "Go to the Department and Dance."
But there should be a periodic review that council gets of policies on, at a certain timeframe, not just that all of a sudden we discover them. I would.
We have, I'm not disagreeing with that, but when I came in, there's several items within the policy handbook that needed to be revised, and I had suggested all departments make revisions, and let's make the revisions, and then we'll submit it to the City Council as a one unit to be adopted. So, you're going to be getting a handbook. I don't think it's good to go back every quarter and review the public policy. Once we have a policy, it's pretty, I mean, it's traditions. It's set unless there's a problem with it. And we've had some issues come up. I think you need to read the policy handbook to see what I'm talking about. This has to deal with people going to work, what time they get to work. It's how the city works.
Yes, but you also have a personnel manual, and then the question would be, the departments have specific human resource policies that are different in the policies for the department, and the question would be why? So, I'm, I'm just raising the issue that there should be some type of questionable periodic review, whether it's every five, I'm not saying when, I'm just saying there should be some type of review at periodic points, that that stuff is still applicable and, and applies.
That's what we're doing right now, and bringing it up to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think we're off target here.
I agree.
We'll be discussing what the item is, and.
I agree.
We could add that for a different day.
All right, any further discussion on this? Okay. All right, we have a resolution for transfer vehicle on fixed asset, ma'am.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay. Not sure I have a, what I did with my copy. You've got a copy of it. All right. Ms. McQuarney?
I make a motion that we, we assign this resolution to number and read it for passage.
Second.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yep.
Mr. Adams?
What are we voting on?
This resolution to transfer this vehicle.
So, we haven't even read the resolution? Are we just giving it a number?
Regret.
The motion was to give it a number.
To give it a number.
And read.
And read it.
And read for approval.
That's what I like to do, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Ms. McQuarney?
Uh-huh, yes.
Six zero, the resolution number will be seven zero eight. Resolution authorizing reallocation of surplus city property. Whereas, the City Council recognizes the importance of accounting for reallocated capital items, whereas adherence to the previously established fixed asset policy, disposal of assets will have been satisfied. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that's section one. City Council authorizes the following vehicle to be reallocated within the city as follows. Two thousand Chevrolet pickup, then number one G C D T one nine nine zero seven eight two oh eight one six two, currently allocated to Department Department, so be allocated to the Parks and Recreation Department. Section two, said transfer shall be appropriately recorded on the fixed asset inventory list of each respective department.
What was that number again?
Seven zero eight.
All right, our next item of business under old business is continuing discussion of rates prior to our April 24th public hearing. I really don't have anything new.
Motion to discuss.
Okay, the second.
Second.
There really isn't anything new. It's just brought up from council to, if we have any other input right now before our public hearing, we need to consider.
Okay, when is the public hearing again?
April 24th.
Oh, that's right, right before, right at 6:00.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't have anything more to add to this, but, there's always the but, is with this rates, which has to be done to meet the bond service fee, excuse me, will we also have a chance to talk about the restructuring of the rates of the water in sewer at a future date? Because a lot of people would like to see that restructuring on a per gallon billing rather than a fixed fee. And I know that this has to be done, but I also know that the people I've talked to really, and with the readings that I've done, that restructuring the rates would be more equitable and make the same amount of money, probably.
We can always discuss, council can always discuss whatever they want.
But is it up to us, or is it up to Public Works to be coming up with a, a scenario like that? Is it up to the City Council to, to set the rates?
It's up to the City Council to set the rates.
Okay. Because I'd kind of like to have, I guess it would be a separate motion then, at some point, you know, bring it on the agenda, to talk about restructuring the rates.
Ms. McQuarney?
Well, just, you know, in regards to that, the, the major problem that you run into, into that is you have a lot of properties that are seasonal. And if you, if you do that, then they won't be paying anything. I mean, it's, it's traditional, I think, in, in cities nationwide to have a tiered structure like that. Now, that, now that itself may, may vary, but you have to have, you have to have a minimum usage to cover non-uses for everybody. It, it makes it equitable to all, and you're, that's what you're trying to do. I mean, it's never going to be perfect. It just, I mean, we can't do that. It just doesn't happen. Perfect doesn't exist in the world today.
You might look at your gas bill. You can turn your gas completely off, and you're still going to get a minimum gas bill, even if you do not use any gas. Same thing with your electric.
I've never looked at mine.
So, Ms. Kendrick?
The reason I would like to discuss the Sewer Committee in May is so that we can revisit this on a more thoughtful basis.
Very good.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Would it be possible at our next meeting to have Lonny discuss what the impact on the present budget will be of this? I mean, there should be some reduction in our 2017 budget if this goes through, correct?
Be some reduction in our budget?
Because, I mean, we've got bond payments and interest and principal payments in our 2017 budget that should be eliminated with this. Is that correct?
Ms. Kendrick?
Wouldn't, I'm not sure it would have an impact, well, it would have some impact on the budget.
Right.
But some of it, the payments, the bond payments are coming out of our bank accounts, and so, they're not actually coming out of our budget.
I think there's.
But existing bank accounts. I mean, that's.
The interest on all of them is in the budget, and two of them are in the budget and one of them's not. It's never really been real clear. But there, there is a principal payment in the budget and some interest payments also.
Interest payments in the budget.
Principal payments aren't in the budget.
That's a separate, or vice versa. Ms. McQuarney?
Just in, in regards to Bob's statement there, eventually, yes, it will, it will free up money.
Right.
Yes, it will, for other things.
Well, what about, I mean, in 2017, at what point will this start generating money? And wouldn't that impact the 2017 budget?
I mean, if, if that's the case, it would, we can address that, well, I doubt we'll even have it ready by, by, we may start collecting one in midterm.
Right.
Or mid, mid-year. So, well, I think, I think if it generates additional income for '17, I think that's great, and I think, but we'll be able to, we'll know where we are going into '18, and we can, then we can create the 2018 budget accordingly. And then maybe select, by the time, you know, by the time we do mid-year, we're not going to, we're not going to have any, any solid figures on what it's generating at that point.
Ricky?
Basically, any sewer money that comes in, it's line item sewer only, sewer, water, whatever. It's not going to go to anything else, so it's not going to go into the general fund. So, what you're going to see is the money from the sewer going to the sewer bill.
That was not my question.
But what that will do in the long run is free up our supposed putaway money that we've been using. But you're not going to see any changes otherwise, because this is just going to go straight into that bill and get everything paid off early.
All right, could I ask Kellma a question? Aren't there interest and principal payments, bond payments, in the 2017 budget?
There are, and at the risk of speaking for Mr. Clark, I think that he is going to make the adjustment, in the mid-year budget adjustment, to move the interest out of the financial reporting and into the sinking fund that Ms. Kendrick.
And into the what fund?
The sinking fund, where the principal is housed. But that's, I've, I'm.
Right.
Providing secondhand information.
Well, that's, so I'm asking, could he be here at our next meeting to kind of discuss what would happen, what the implications are for this on the, on the 2017 budget?
Yeah, I can ask him to be here. I'm not sure, I think what Ms. McQuarney is saying, there's a lot of, I'm not sure anybody can say right now what's going to happen until we start seeing, we can make some projections, he can make some projections. But until we get our mid-year budget, that's the time when we'll be able to start seeing. And then in August, when we start preparing our budget for 2018, then we'll really be able to say.
It was my understanding that this whole rate structure was, was a projection. Is that, is that not true?
Well, of course, it's a projection.
Well, then, why can't we make a projection of the impact on the 2017 budget?
We can.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll have, I'll have him come up here. We're getting off track.
All right.
Off the budget, coming off tangent here. And I'll have him come up and we'll talk about it. Any other talk and discussion on the rates? Yes, ma'am.
Were you going to say something?
No. You go right ahead.
Chicken now. I, I agree with Bob on projections, and that we need to hear that, and I hope that Mr. Clark can come and get us.
Well, he can. But it's off, off subject, but I'll have him show up.
Well, I don't, that's my opinion. I don't think it is, but.
All right, any discussion, more discussion on the rates? If not, have a motion to put the ordinance number 2254 on the special election for parks on third reading.
Some moves?
Right.
Got discussion? Yes, sir.
I just would like to reiterate again that several of us had some concerns about the, the emergency stuff, and we would hope that parks would be more thoughtful in the future. And I know you explained why it was and what had happened this time, and I understand it, but it would just be nice not to get in emergency situations with consistency. But I'm still going to vote for it.
Ms. McQuarney?
So, I'd like to make a motion that we place suspended rules and place ordinance number 2254 up for its third and final reading.
Second.
By title only.
Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
This is probably out of time, out of turn, but I am going to say that the same issue with the emergency, then with the, this tax coming up, that I would much rather see a tax for infrastructure for the city rather than for parks. I'm just putting like two bits in, and I may bring that up at a later date, but that's my opinion.
We, that is one of the reasons parks were so late in getting this to us. We thought we were going to put, put a tax back on the ballot along with this, at the same time we talked about it. It was my feeling, and I didn't really discuss it with the council, but elected because of our increase in our water rates, that I felt like a tax would not pass at all on the infrastructure. We offered the city the opportunity to pass a tax and not raise the water rates drastically as we're doing right now. Eventually, they would have been raised to this point, but we wouldn't, we could have done it more in a stair-step procedure. That tax failed, and the alternative was to raise our water rates. And I felt like if we went ahead and backed to our tax, we would have the same people who were against the tax, raised the same issues. And so, I felt at that time, this would not, that tax wouldn't pass. And so, I informed the parks of that, and then they went ahead and put forth their issue. Then we had problems with the county trying to figure out how much it was going to cost for a tax. So, that was a separate issue. That's one of the reasons it took so long, and the reason we are now in a point where they're needing it immediately and then on emergency basis, to put it back to the people for their discussion. So, that's the long and the short of it. I would love to see it, too. I would love for the people to pass a tax for infrastructure. But I don't think anybody would, you know, but anyway. All right, any other discussion? All right. Roll call?
Yes. Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
Uh, reading 2254, by title only.
Yes.
Yes, sorry. I didn't know that's what you were doing.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance number 2254, ordinance calling for a special election to refer the issue of amended ordinance Q176 to the voters of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for their acceptance or rejection declaring an emergency to exist and for other purposes.
Ms. McQuarney?
I'd like to make a motion that we vote on this ordinance for passage.
Second.
Discussion, I'm sorry. Oh, wait, I thought the third reading, I thought the emergency clause came after the third reading?
It does.
All right, well, but you read it as a part of the third reading, then?
No, that's a separate vote.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is passage of the third.
Right. third reading?
It does.
All right, but you read it as a part of the third reading, then?
No, that's a separate vote.
Oh, okay.
This is passage of the third.
Right.
Okay.
Got you.
Ms. Adamson?
This is for the resolution, right?
This is approval of the third reading of ordinance number 2254.
Just the reading of it?
Approval of the third reading.
But not approval of the whole thing?
Approval of the third reading is approval of the whole thing.
Then I vote no.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
5-1.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the-
Emergency clause?
Yeah, emergency clause.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second to approve the emergency clause. Any discussion? Okay, call for a vote.
Right. Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Adamson?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
4-2. Emergency clause, section 6. Since it is necessary to quickly address this issue and to promote economic thrift and finance of Lake Leatherwood Park where the preservation of public peace, health, and safety, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage and approval. Thank you.
All right, discussion, motion to have discussion on public restroom?
Some moves.
Second. Oh, we've got to get to that discussion.
I said some moves.
All right, we needed a second. I think at the last meeting, I don't remember, if I have to go back and look, somebody was talking about the bathrooms at the transit being locked.
Yeah, all of us people who worked down there.
Well, the, it was for that day, we had had vandalism in there. We had a, we've had to put up, there's a wire screen that people can crawl over and get back in, and so because there were vandalism things, we locked it until somebody was around to keep the vandalism from happening. Since then, I had asked the transit director if we could do anything about keeping it open, and we've installed cameras in there now, and so we are able to keep it open. We have established so it will be open from seven days a week, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., along with all the other bathrooms. There seems to be a misconception that's been put into the newspapers recently, not misconception, misinformation, that we have no handicap bathrooms downtown. Well, we do have handicap bathrooms. We have it in the transit facility, and we also have it on North Main Street. Both of those buildings have, are handicapped accessible. Both of them are open from 7 to 8, which is the same as we've always had. And then lately, I got a notice that somebody put an ad in the paper noting that there wasn't, even though we had handicap bathrooms downtown, nobody knew where they were. Well, and I had already directed, and we have now, a, two pieces of information, which you both have, you all have in your packet, noting handicap parking and location of handicap bathrooms. Signage is being put up at the other restrooms noting that if they need a handicap restroom, where they're going to be and where they are located. So, for some reason, somebody ends up at Pendergrass Corner needing a handicap bathroom, they can be notified that there is one in the trolley station in North Main. So, that's kind of the update for that.
Good.
Mickey?
Okay, so the seven days a week, that's 12 months a year?
Yes.
Because what I was thinking of, we need it when we're doing the parking lot stuff on weekends, and when it's off-season and therefore the trolley thingy isn't normally open. If the cameras are the kind that the police can sit in the station and look on the camera, okay, like it is a Basin Park, okay, I was going to say, if nothing else, you can always give a key to the group that's there that weekend, that they of course have to turn back into the police, but then they could use that too. I mean, that is a possibility for off-season.
No, we have it with the cameras, and so if something happens, we'll have it on-
Well, that's something they might want to just keep in mind, that they can always make a key accessible in the off-season, so.
Okay. Yes, sir.
This is very nice. This is great. And it designated the handicap restrooms, and I'm sure they're already printed and all. It would have been nice if there had been another said restroom, so you could have got the one at the corner of Spring Street, and then maybe even now added the tram, just for, they wouldn't have been handicapped, but if they're not grossly already printed, it would-
Just for their location, yeah.
Just for a location.
Yeah.
But if not, you know what? This is way better than what we have.
They are noted on there.
They are?
Yes, sir. They're just not the handicap noted, but there is a blue dot.
There's like a dark-
Yeah, there's a dark circle noting the public restroom.
Oh, the blue dot, yeah.
Blue dot.
Is that, is blue?
Where's the one that's up by the corner? Is there a blue dot there?
Yeah, it's a blue dot.
Did you have to go down the steps to get to it by that outdoor? Oh, there is, is that a blue dot?
Yes.
It's supposed to be. It's black.
Which way do you stand, it's a blue dot.
Not handicapped, I was just saying.
Okay, withdraw and get my glasses cleaned.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I just wanted to say, you know, the problem at the Trolley Depot was brought to your attention two weeks ago, and I think this is a very quick resolution, and I appreciate-
Well, we have been working on the map prior to that, but the resolution, we, you know, right after our last meeting, I talked to Smitty, the Transit Director, and the Police Department, see how we could get it resolved, so, yeah.
Thanks.
So, good. All right, any other questions? Okay. Well, my goodness.
This can't be right. We are missing like a whole page here of agenda.
Don't mess it up.
All right, well, agenda setting. I think Peg had something that she wanted to talk about, and the, Peg, you wanted to-
Oh, I would like to add a discussion of the noise ordinance as it stands right now, and whether, I guess I don't need to go any further.
All right, anything else? Yes, ma'am. Oh, I need a second.
Oh, second, sorry.
Okay. All right, City Council comments. Bob?
Not tonight.
I don't have anything.
No, sir?
No, nothing.
Mickey?
Nah.
Peg?
I have something to say. I have to save it. I have actually two things. The first one is I wanted to thank Nancy Paddock, who is organizer extraordinaire in Eureka Springs. Tremendous energy, great attitude, helps with the, organizes the house concerts and with many of the political groups that are going on in town. She's pretty much spearheaded all of that. But then the other thing is, is a shame on you to the governor for scheduling eight executions right after Easter in this state. It is really, really bad for the state, and I hope that he can reconsider and have a stay of execution, so that we don't get known as the execution state. Thank you.
All right. Couple items. One, over the weekend, we had a lot of traffic in town, a lot of people, a lot of motorcycles. And because of that, we had a lot of complaints calling in about our noise ordinance, which is where this item's coming up for, about the discussion of the noise ordinance. And I just wanted to let the Council know and the public, because again, there were several complaints on it. You know, we're a town of 2,000 people, we have a lot of people coming in through there. Over the weekend, we had eight arrests, four DWIs, we had two traffic accidents, it's just in the city limits. We had several traffic accidents outside the city limits. Fire and ambulance were very, very busy. We had 12 incident reports. We had 136 service calls, calls that the police responded to. We had 23 citations issued. We had 10 warning issues and nine noise violations issued, which is really quite a few on the, we've had total noise violations year-to-date, we've had 22 noise ordinances. This is probably our first major event, you might say, that somebody was putting on that created a lot of motorcycle noise, a lot of people in town, Diversity Weekend and the noise. We always generate a lot of complaints on the first one, as the summer goes on, and for some reason, the noise seems to go down a little bit. We had one business up the street here, that we had two officers on duty checking noise up there. The owner of the place actually came out and wanted his, because he had his own meter, wanted his meter checked to make sure he was, had the same sounds checked that the police officers had. At the same time, the band quit playing and the noise was 90 decibels because of all the noise going around, and this is including trucks, motorcycles, everything else. The band wasn't even playing. When the band was playing, it was in the mid 75 to 80s, it was under the legal limit. When asked to, if he would, what he, he asked what he could do, and he actually turned down the volume, when, know that there was people coming from him. So, he's trying to be a good citizen. Maybe not everybody's happy, but he was trying to work for the city. They had complied, it seemed to go out of their way. A lot of times, it's even, you put enough people, even the people in Basin Park can get together with the drumming and can generate more than 90 decibels into there. When I was growing up, I had lived right across the street from the Basin Park, right above the chocolate factory. We had a group of people called the Hill Folks, who played music five nights a week. And my grandparents, bless their hearts, played in it. And I had to listen to that noise. And they were not a good musical group. However, five nights a week, I listened to it, and I'm sure they would violate the noise ordinance today. But I don't know whether we had any complaints. I know I couldn't complain. I just, I don't know. Anyway, so, you know, we're a tourist town, and we're always going to have it. But I wanted to let the Council know and the people that our police officers this weekend did a lot of work and tried to do their best, and I think they did do their best with what they could. So, anyway, with that being said, we want to have some upcoming events. Tomorrow, the 11th, is Max Elbow's Memorial Second Line. For 6 o'clock, you're going to start at Sweet Spring and walk down the street to the Basin Park, and we'll have a celebration, Basin Park, celebrating Max's life. It should be real good, and I know Max is going to be smiling, and he'll be up at the head of the parade. And so on the 15th, we'll have the First Amendment Parade, 2 p.m., we'll start at the library, and we'll come down to Spring Street. On the 23rd, we will have a protesting anti-Semitism at 2 p.m. from Sweet Springs down to Basin Park. On the 15th, we'll have music in the park from 5 to 7 at the Basin Park. Oh, and this is one of our favorites, April 14th through the 16th, UFO Conference is coming up all day long.
30th Annual.
14th through the 16th, so we're going to have a lot of special people coming into town, or be picked up.
Drop in.
Drop in. If you have your reservations, they'll be at the end of the Ozarks waiting for you. On the 17th through the 21st, we will have the citywide cleanup, trash pickup, citywide, and you can get your permits downstairs. So, if you have anything you want to do, get your permits out there. And then April 22nd, Morrell's in the Ozarks Festival will be coming up. And also, I believe that weekend, 20th through the 23rd, will be springtime in the Ozarks, with, will probably double the population within those people in that group.
I'm sure, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this earlier, but a part of the First Amendment Parade will include petitions in the park. The last clause of the First Amendment gives people the right to petition their government for redress of their grievances. And so I welcome anyone to bring their petitions to the park and ask people to sign them.
Mr. McClung?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you, guys.
Butch?
Yes, ma'am.
They know, so.